Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the order of this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this twenty-second day of February two thousand twenty-one at ten o'clock AM. Stand with us for the legislative.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under our in the dismal of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner West will not be present for today's meeting. Is aware. Opening of sealed bids for the Justice Center Campus Fiber Network project?
Yes, I have them. I don't know if West, do you want to say anything before we start it?
Wes Harrison, the owner and representative for the fiber optics loop project, and today we're receiving bids. Look forward to assessing the bids and then make a recommendation for you guys to approve your next meeting. Thank you.
The first bid is from Miller Eads Company out of Indianapolis. Base bid for Miller Eads is three hundred forty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, three four nine seven five zero point zero zero. The next bid is from Wired Communications LLC from Indianapolis. Base bid from Wired Communications is two hundred and seventeen thousand fifty dollars, two one seven zero five zero point zero zero. Next from Clausen Communications from Greenwood. Clausen's bid is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars, one two seven nine zero zero point zero zero. And the last bid is from Ermco from Indianapolis. Ermco's bid, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand three hundred dollars, two three eight three zero zero point zero zero. That's all bits.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion to get these to Wes, let him review, and maybe come back to our next meeting with the recommendations.
Second, sir. Further discussion. Bring in all those in favor who have a saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. You're up. And, right, treasure.
Good morning, everyone. Michelle Ann Graves, Johnson County Treasurer. I am requesting an approval for an extension to an existing agreement with Seamless Docs. The services provided by this company will allow for Johnson County taxpayers more opportunities to conduct county business online.
Third, per. Second, any further? And then all those in favor who have a saying aye. Pose.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Health Department's approval apply for ISDH two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two.
Betsy Swearingen, Director, Johnson County Health Department. I'm just here to ask for approval to apply or to sign the letter of intent for the upgrade preparedness grant for July first.
I would move to approve.
Second, any further? Hearing that, all those in favor who have a saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you.
First, president. And parks, and then all three of these are pending legal.
Kevin, I'm your Assistant Superintendent Johnson County Department. Yeah, I was just coming to seek your guys' approval for using Big Bass Fun House again for some park events. We used them last few years. They've been great to work with. They they monitor and run all the equipment they bring and set it up and run and everything. I know, obviously, this will have to go through Sheena. Our park board already approved him. Roger, our park board attorney, has already looked over him. He had some changes, but they already went ahead and changed them. So we just got to see your approval and Sheena's approval.
I'd make a motion for pending legal on all three events.
Well, second, any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor who have a saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you.
About time we get something going, right?
I know, hopefully.
Animal Control ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash vote dash two. First reading.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to come before you this morning for the first reading of proposal ordinance change. Amend the fees for euthanasia and also, I believe, for killing at the shelter.
Move for approval.
Second, any further discussion?
Michael, do you want to go into some of the fees, just so the general public would know about that?
Of course. We're proposing that we amend the daily boarding fee for an animal that's left at the shelter from five dollars to ten dollars. That's still way below what most boarding kennels are charged, but it also helps us to recoup some of the well, food costs, times vaccine costs, et cetera, that we give each animal that comes in. And of course, the cost to clean the enclosure and et cetera. Now, on the euthanasia fee, it'd be just one fee, basically, and that would reimburse Dr. Oliver Ork under the vet from coming in or climbing in and she might euthanize an animal that unfortunately would have to be put down due to illness or uncontrolled aggressive issues.
No, I just wanted to get that out kind of.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Bear. Brian, you've been a big driver of this, and I can't thank you enough for that. Sheena, for all the hard work you've done. I would just publicly thank you for this difficult subject, and I appreciate it very.
I think we've helped our employees a bunch by doing what we're doing.
This is, this is probably one of the, if not the biggest game changer in animal control in sixteen years, I think it is, actually.
That is some time.
Yes, sir.
About time. I never, you know, just so the public knows what topic that is, it's my my efforts and Sheena's work toward making it. Our employees weren't doing euthanasia. Because that's a big effect on those people, and it's the worst thing you can do to somebody. That's what veterinarians are for, not what people that work in these shelters that want to keep animals alive, not put them down. So I thank God for that.
Yeah, I'd also like to publicly state, since I'm here, since you've been Commissioner, Brian, we've gone from well over a thousand, well over a thousand animals put down a year to well less than a hundred last year. Well, less than a hundred.
Bring it up.
And trending ever downward.
Yeah, let's keep it going down.
Yes, sir.
Keep them alive.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for all you've done this week.
I will pass that along.
She had the mail.
Make the motions for, I thought I already did.
You did.
You did. I'll send you.
Yep, you did.
You did. So we need to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carries. Thanks, Michael.
Don't sidetrack her.
I love my animals. Love my animals. Sheriff's Office. Good feed.
Why wouldn't you love the sheriff's office? Wayne Burgess, Johnson County Sheriff. I believe the block agreement has been looked at by legal. Just needs your approval for the.
Move for approval.
Second, any further? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And then of a fire protection district. Establishment of cumulative fire funding building equipment fund, approval of increased maximum annual property tax.
Thank you all. Jeff Peters with Peters Municipal Consultants, and I have the Assistant Chief Josh Schneider with me and Lynn Gray as legal counsel. For the fire district, they have three things that they want to pursue. One is increasing their cumulative fire building fund rate to help replace some of their equipment. The second is to increase their operating levy under a statute that was passed last year that they qualify for. And the third is to build a new fire station. So before you today are the first two lengths of that. The cumulative fire building and equipment fund reestablishment has been advertised, adopted by the local board. For a statute, it requires your approval to go forward to the state for approval. The increase to the maximum levy has been adopted by the local board as well at that same meeting where we have a public hearing for the cumulative fire building equipment fund. We did have, no one speaks against either of those issues. And I provided an executive summary that kind of shows the tax impact for the taxpayers, different units of government, et cetera, for those three proposals. I'd be happy to answer any of those questions, and if you'd like any information as to the use of those funds and the benefit to those receiving the fire protection, we can get the chief up here for you. The Assistant Chief, sorry.
What are we looking at total increase if all three of these are put into effect? Taxes for those people in there?
All three of those, and we used a tax impact of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollar mortgage homestead, so they would get a homestead exemption, exemption, et cetera. The total for all three of those, and we estimated a firehouse at about three million dollars, which that's a progress, a process or a estimate that's still in progress. But all three of those together would be about a hundred and forty dollars a year for the taxpayer. That's a little under twelve dollars a month.
And that would increase the revenue how much per year?
For the cumulative building and equipment, fire building and equipment fund, it would increase revenue of about eighty-nine thousand dollars. For the operating funds, they would be increased about two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And for the fire station, it would just cover principal and interest payments as they came due.
I mean, I could weigh in on this a little bit. More deeper, more, I mean, I appreciate everything you've done. You know, it's always good as you always provide to us. There's some issues that are going on with some of these fire departments right now, you know, working on some mergers. I mean, I'm personally working on the Barterfield White River merger. I know Commissioner Barrett's been involved in some of this down southern districts. In my mind, it's a little premature to build a new fire station to tax the people because I think some of this district stuff's going to change a little bit down the road. So, I mean, that's my, kind of my position right now. I mean, you can give me all the numbers you want, but I think it's, we're a little premature on, on doing this, so.
Yeah, I think that the tax, that the amount of taxes that would go to each individual homestead or each individual property owner down there, that, that's a lot of money to hit them with all the time. And I don't think that I don't think they would be getting the service that they would expect with that kind of increase. I'm just being honest with you. I know a lot of calls are not taken by none of them. They're taken by other departments. Historically, it's been that way for a long, long time. So I'm not sure our service is increasing well enough to establish that from what I'm being told. And that's something we're looking into, and I think maybe I'd advise Commissioner Walls, maybe at a future time. This is probably not the time with some of the things that we're hearing, working at down in that area. So not to be detrimental to anybody here. I don't want to be depraving anybody. I just, that's a lot of money to ask down the taxpayer. I know, in our eyes, it's only a hundred and forty dollars a year, and they're not, that's a lot of money. And I'd be complaining about it if it was in my district down here too, so. I just think that maybe regroup and have some conversation. I'd be happy to meet with the the chief and assistant chief, whoever, Lynn, his attorney, just to kind of discuss some issues that I foresee. For lack of anything else, I don't think I would be in a motion on this anyway, from what I understand. So.
Thank you for your consideration.
And don't let the, I don't want this conversation to end, is what I'm saying. And since that's down in my district, that should probably go with me. Thank you. Open Board of Commissioners, appointment of planning zoning director. Recommendation, except Dennis Barber. You want to give us the.
Are yours a rendition?
Our Davis County Coordinator.
We're just making Mark talk, aren't we?
Well, I just think that makes more official.
Last week, we did have several individuals that did apply for this position, and after interviews, it has been decided that the current senior planner, Michelle Hancer, to be the new planning and zoning director.
I would some move.
And I'll second that. Any further discussion?
I did, yeah.
Effective.
Oh, effective date. Yeah, sorry, didn't read the red.
I did, maybe right twenty-fifth.
Motion did. Second's good on that. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to welcome Michelle, standing in the back. Welcome. I guess you've been here for a while. And David, thank you for your service at the county. That's been invaluable for the last eight years. So I know I really appreciate it personally. You've kind of led us through some tough times, and Michelle gets to take over from here and getting even tougher times. So, thank you both.
It has been very even keel over the last few years with your personality and where you have to think. So, thank, thank you too.
Thank you.
Been a pleasure working with both of you, but a pleasure working with David as director.
Likewise.
Thank you very much, sir.
Now get to work.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Non-voting school board member to Johnson County. We're up for that already.
Yeah.
Well, we, we had, I, I, I can take it. I mean, we've got a non-voting school board member that we need to put on here. Our last one went off the school board, so we lost. They, they didn't read around, so then, so we had to find it out.
So you found one?
I found one.
Who'd we sucker into that?
Mr. Scott Alexander from Center of School Board. He is duly serving on the Greenwood RDC also, which I think, Miss Lynn Graves already gone, but she represents Center of School Corporation. She has given the legal opinion that it is fine since they're non-voting members. So if you've got a problem with that, I don't, and the mayor of Greenwood does not, so.
Such a wonderful day. I appreciate the fact that he's willing to serve. That's it. That is a really, really important position for us to have any but, so. I'll move. You approve once you did, right?
I did, Mr. Scott Alexander.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Approval exempt position highway department. Deputy Director.
To approve with the effective date of two twenty-five twenty-one.
Second, any further? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Boy handbook approval of exempt position, Basia, Director, effective date two twenty-five.
I would move to approve.
Second, any further? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Approval of resolution two thousand twenty-one dash R dash O one, resolution expressing support for local control of land use decisions. We want any discussion on that?
Go free to discuss.
You don't want me to discuss this?
You can discuss if you so.
Mr. Walton.
You can. You can weigh in if you want, or opposite groups are for.
Well, I mean, briefly, you're, you're just expressing that the Commissioners are not in favor of the State House passing House Bill thirteen eighty-one.
That's probably well put, opposed to coming from one of us.
Well, to the, to the extent that, that you feel that it degrades your home rule powers.
Absolutely. Shame on them.
I had you out.
I'm moving to approve the letter, and I really want to thank Sheena and Zach on this, putting it together professionally and making our thoughts, it could have been a little bit harsher language, but I think you chose the proper language in this.
I agree. I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. And, and I will say this is probably because it got to, probably not the only bill we're going to be objecting to that's going through the House and the Senate due to the efforts to basically take the home rule power away from the Commissioners and local jurisdiction. And some really silly demands that, that I've seen in it. And sometimes you just kind of call it what it is. And it's absolutely absurd and ridiculous, and and I made a comment, and I'm going to say this publicly because I want people to understand my position. I became Commissioner because I felt like the county needed guidance moving forward by people that weren't political and that we could conduct business in Johnson County in a way that was fair to everybody, but yet boots on the ground for people here that understand the people in our community and who live next door to them, so we make decisions knowing that we're close door, next door neighbors to, to these people. And since I've been here as Commissioner, I've watched the federal government try to swallow state government, and in turn, the state government tries to swallow the local jurisdiction government. And it's the most absurd thing I've ever seen, and when we should be working together to make things better for not only the country, but the state and the local jurisdictions of, of the people here, because there's nobody that knows these counties like we do. The Commissioners are elected here. We know our people in these counties. We know what they understand, what they believe, and we try to, to work with that. And for that jurisdiction to, to be taken or given to someone who doesn't have a clue what we're going through down here, to me, is just absurd. And I don't know what we need to do to change that. It seems like every time we elect somebody into those positions, they, they go in with the right motives and they come out with wrong ones. So I don't know what the answer is, but I formally file my complaint as a citizen of Johnson County. We need our power here. We need our local jurisdiction here. We need to make the rules that we want with the people here and make common sense judgments, so. That's it. I'm moving on. COVID leave extension.
It's, it's just a proposal to extend the leave as we've been using it, not to necessarily revank any hours or anything like that until the end of March.
I'll say cautiously that that will probably be the last extension that I will look for since the numbers are falling, the vaccinations are coming out. Just publicly, I'm going to state that that would be the last one I, I move for an extension on. I think, you know, the country, everybody is moving in the right direction. The vaccinations are coming out, and if you don't know what to do by now, you will never know what to do by now, so.
And locally, our requests for leave are bearing out those same patterns.
Yeah, okay. And I would move to the end of March.
Second, any further discussion? Bring in all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Emergency closure administrative leave parameters. Discussions.
Oh, my. Well, my understanding is that, you know, there's an emergency closing provision in the handbook, and we have to make a couple of decisions as far as how to implement those policy. My understanding is that for those employees who were here on snow day, February sixteenth, there was a maximum amount of hours that they'll be banked as administrative leave of seven and a half hours to be used by, I think we said the end of April, but there is a paid period ending on April twenty-first or May fifth, if you want to choose one of those paid periods.
This doesn't matter. April.
April twenty-first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Extends it above that.
I would.
Move on, please.
Um, yeah, go ahead. The employee handbook explicitly states that you have to come up with a date by which it should be used, so that part should probably be voted on.
Time would be April twenty-first.
And I will send an email out to anyone who isn't aware.
Right, this, we're going to use that time. I mean, we can discuss whatever you think.
I'll find one. Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Is there any other discussion that needs to be brought up or voted on? And that's.
I don't think so.
That's all. Make sure we.
We'll do it on a case by case basis, but I know, I, I know what your wishes are.
Thank you. Claims in the credit card. I'll have some questions.
I have an answer for one of them. For the highway purchase. He says OSHA requires the Highway Department to have PPE that meets minimum high vis requirements. And so they bought jackets and sweatshirts for the employees that are in the field. Like high vis.
They're not bomber jackets.
They're, well, it's not even.
They're bright yellow.
Yeah, they're bright yellow.
High vis.
So make that, like, that's just their marketing thing, we call it bomber jacket.
Wow. I didn't know that. The bomber jacket is really black and red.
Yeah, it's kind of our era. That must be new for.
That's my area.
We did have manifests submitted by IT and Sheriff, if we got right.
That's all the additional I have.
I, I have no questions on it.
Move to approve claims.
Second, any further? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Pose. Motion carries. Sorry, go back. Commissioners minutes two, eight, two thousand twenty-one.
Good for her.
Second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Public comment. Five minutes or less. Everything good on Zoom?
You're in comments?
Yep, I'm done. I don't want Sheriff to have to come in here and cuff me.
You're adjourned, sir.
I'll second that. We're here in